Oh, he just made it.
You ready, Matt? Okay, five o'clock, we'll call to order. Council meeting of Monday, August 4th. Go call, please.
John Ortley.
I'm here.
Scott Meverden.
Here.
Midge Swedberg.
Here.
Wayne Schmidt.
Here.
Casey Boer.
Here.
Dawn Kidd.
Here.
Kevin Schmidt and Amy Johnson will not be in attendance tonight.
Thank you. Stand for the pledge, please. I'd like to make a statement to the flag of the United States of America. And we are a family, a country, which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Confirm the meeting in compliance with open meetings law?
Yes, it is.
Thank you. Would like, would look for a motion to either approve or make changes to the order of the agenda?
Motion to approve.
Second.
By Casey and second by Wayne? All in favor?
Aye.
Close? Motion carries. Did everyone have a chance to look at the meeting minutes for July 7th and July 15th? And are there any questions or discussion?
I'll make the motion to accept full.
Motion by Wayne?
Second.
Second by Casey? Was that you, Casey?
Yes.
Yeah. Yep, Casey, all in favor?
Aye.
Close? Who's carrying? Anybody here tonight for public comment? See one mic? Stand up. Get your name and address for the record, please.
Mike Frayle, 1510 Navarino, here in the city of El Goma. Good evening, Mayor, Council, and staff, city personnel. Want to make a few comments to you this evening. First being on the 26th of August here on the weekend. The American Legion held a motorcycle show. They're on the street around Legion Park at the post. I think for the first time, having conducted this program, we were moderately successful. I appreciate the help of the city. The fact that we had the area. Casey set up picnic tables for us. I topped the map, we used some of the electricity to keep our warmers warm. The Casys helped us with serving food. And we ran a registration booth and had, I think, a fairly decent show. We had 42 cycles, motorcycles came in of varying types. Some in pieces, some brand-new shiny models. Two-wheeled, three-wheeled, six-seated long, or whatever that thing was. Doc Hopkins brought a number of bikes and several people with him. We had, I think, good support from the community. I met several people who I basically knew lightly from the area. But I didn't know that they were cycle enthusiasts. So that was kind of fun and exciting to see. From little, little bitty, small motorized vehicles to large, powerful bikes. It was, it was a lot of fun. And I think we drew a lot of interest. And we're actually in the plans for continuing the same program next year. Hope to get a little bit bigger and better. People love coming to El Goma. We've had people who traveled well over 100 miles to get here just to be part of the show. So I thought that was, that was a pretty great opportunity. And I thank everyone who participated or supported us in every way, anyway. Also, I want to mention, the last time I spoke, we all know the Legion was looking at a memorial. Constructing a memorial monument of one type or another. And I said that that program had been put on hold. Well, the program is still in progress. It's not dead. We are, we are still working on it, looking at, at different designs. So that's moving forward. We have a group of people looking at options and trying to put plans together. So we'll have more of that report as we move forward with the program. But just wanted you and the city residents to know that that's still an ongoing project. And it's alive and well and active. Again, I thank the city for the support. We're proud to be here. We're proud to be a part of this community. And I speak for, I think, all the Legion members and say that they feel the same way. We do have differences, but we work out our differences. And that's, that's what, that's what we all want to do. We look forward to participating in the Shanty Day Parade. We're going to have Carrie the Color down the street as its tradition. So we have several people lined up and working on that. And on a note of pride, I might say, we have some new younger members who are now members of our post here in El Goma. So I'm, I'm excited and proud about that. So again, I thank you for all that you do for us and we're proud to be here. Thank you.
Thank you, Mike. Is there anybody else for public comment? One more time? Seeing none? Did everyone have a chance to go over the bills and the credit card fees?
What, what was the Carter collision? It rang up to $501 bucks.
Dave, do you want to, or do you want me to talk to her?
Do you go over it?
Well, is it, which one is it, I guess?
Well, it says $501, Carter collision, or the 2025, we missed one.
Oh. I guess one 2024?
24.
Well, it says 25 on here.
Yeah.
I'm just repeating what I'm looking at. There was, um, correct one, but one of the officers was backing in. He caused damage to actually to another vehicle as he was backing in. This was a Y logo. Sure, is it the different one? That was the one they claimed that just came in. The other one? That one was, there was, um, I actually don't know how the damage happened. But the vehicle got backed into or hit and caused damage to the front end into the, uh, the front fender. So for Carter's was.
So somebody hit us?
While we were trying to be out on, yeah, somebody's hit us while we were.
So was it the other insurance paying or?
We don't know who the other person is. Oh, so.
We're not sure if it was Hitler who was parked on a call or?
So there's two, two different things, it sounds like.
The one was, I'm thinking we got notified of, um, the newer vehicle. It actually was a 23 is what that should be for. With the 24 was from last year where somebody finally filed a claim on it or?
Yeah, that's not on there.
Right, that's.
Okay, I guess that clears up my questions.
Go ahead.
The dent in the front end that we got, we're not sure how.
I got a question about why Digger's Hotline charged the city 489 in column nine?
We pay Digger's Hotline every month.
I thought that was a free service.
It, it is for you. We pay for it on our end. We get a bill from them every month.
Okay.
So if, if you dial 811 or their 1-800 number, you don't pay for calling in a locate. It's a free service. We pay for it. Going in and getting those locates and going out and doing it, we pay every month. The Digger's Hotline.
I got a question for Casey. Casey, what was the thing at the tennis court? Because we just had that redone, didn't we?
Yeah, somebody on a bike, I believe, dumped their bike and hit the bar, went through the, oh, went through the liner.
Oh, okay.
There is no bikes at tennis court, but apparently there's not enough signs, so we're putting more signs.
Did you decide to put a bike rack outside?
We're going to, we're gonna actually, on the outside of the fence, we're gonna take a section of fence out. Knock it out and then put a bike rack so it recesses, leave it on the sidewalk.
I'm not sure who answers this. There was, uh, MJB Industries top grinder.
It's top grinder. That's when we take our whole mulch pile, grass clippings, everything up at the street shop. That's MJB is the company that comes in and with a big top grinder. And they turn it into the mulch that we have there. So that's a bill, sometimes twice a year, once a year, they come in and do that.
Okay, thank you. Anything else? If not, I would look for a motion to approve the bills.
Somewhere.
By John?
Second.
Second by Wayne? Go call, please, Karen.
Midge Swedberg.
Yes.
John Ortley.
Yes.
Casey Boer.
Yes.
Wayne Schmidt.
Yes.
Dawn Kidd.
Yes.
Scott Meverden.
Yes.
Do we have any conference attendance?
Not at this time, there.
Thank you. Who claims? Correct?
None at this time.
Okay. Committee reports? Everybody go over their committee reports? And are there any questions over this question?
And are you, is, who represents the city on tourism and promotion? Is that you, Casey? No, John. John? They don't meet throughout the whole summer?
Yes, I was told. And I've never been to a meeting, I was assigned to that committee, but I've never been to a meeting, that the first meeting would be in October.
I, I just find that.
So I've just kind of been waiting for a meeting.
I just find that funny, when we have all these activities and everything that go on out through the summer, it seems to be our busy time of the year. And the committee doesn't meet.
The description to me was, not saying the right or wrong, you're standing up, is that all of the decisions for all of those events have already been made. There's nothing else to make. The bills have been made, the events have been planned, and that's why. I'm not standing up for it, I'm telling you what I stole.
At the, the end of the year, when they had provided the summation of what had happened and why they did recommend an increase on the, the sales tariff, the room tax. That indicated there were potentially uncollected room tax dollars and some information that was needed. So it sounds like there's work that could be done. And I know that was a point of contention last year. And they ended up meeting for a, a 10-minute cursory meeting last August, which, you know, didn't really satisfy what we, I think, were, were requesting. So I think it's, I mean, to, to Alder Schmidt's point, I think it's, it's worth having that conversation.
Yeah, I, I have no opinion. I just passed on my explanation.
I'm sorry, I couldn't hear down here. You guys, I gotta talk up. I'm, I'm getting older, that, that talk up all of this. What is, what is he talking about?
I'm, I'm questioning the tourism and promotion. If you look down here, they don't meet. They don't meet throughout the summer. And my question is, with all the activities that we have going on, in summer, it seems to be our busiest month. Why do they not meet? That, that was the question I had. And, and John hasn't even been to a meeting yet.
I haven't been to a meeting.
Correct. Because they do control the room tax, correct?
Oh, 70% of it, yes.
70% of it. And it just seems that there's more and more homes down there, and all of a sudden look like they're vacation rental by owners. And I don't know. I, I guess it just kind of amazes me that they don't have to meet throughout the whole summer. Every other committee does. That's all I, I keep questioning it. I thought Casey was still on there, so. Sorry. Wanted to check Casey out.
Anything else? Or a motion to approve?
So, second.
By John, second by Scott? All in favor?
Aye.
Close? Uh, license applications, Erin?
Um, there are no new ones, but included in your packet is the operator's licenses that have been issued to date. And then the temporary Class B licenses or the picnic licenses that have also been issued to date. Does anybody have any questions about any of those licenses? Then otherwise, it's just an FYI.
Okay.
I'm surprised at how many different people we have serve alcohol at this time.
You have to have, um, and you have to have a licensed operator on staff at all times that alcohol is being served or sold. So think of your gas station, Family Dollar, um, all of those.
I was thinking right down, I was thinking about.
Yep, all of those have to be stacked with a licensed operator.
So is that a one-time deal on May 31st, I see, for the horseshoe park? Did they have a tournament or something?
Yep.
And then all these other dates at peace, and that's the youth summer sports league? And they serve alcohol?
They serve beer. But yeah, so like if the horseshoe wanted, if they wanted to sell every Monday night or whatever night that they have shoes. They certainly could take it out as long as it's just that Class B beer license. But yeah, it's very popular for the little leagues. And instead of doing boys' little league this week and girls' little league this week, they combined. And just have El Goma Youth Summer Sports is their group that's been an organization for a couple of years now. And they kind of run it all together. And we get $10 per date.
Per date?
Yep.
Any more on the license? You need nothing for that, Erin?
I do not. Nope, just an FYI.
Yep. Old business, the administration place library building, Matt?
Yeah, so we have seen prices and some discussion to talk about. Everybody just had a plan set in front of them on kind of the way the city hall without the library would look. This isn't the whole plan set. This is just kind of a cookie cutter of, I guess, the floors that are important. To get our price down where we kind of feel comfortable. If you look, it starts at A1.3, that is the basement of the building, all right? So I'll give everybody, I know they just got all handed out here. But the break room gets a little bit smaller and we have to add, make the men's and women's bathroom where they currently stand today. Make that into one bathroom to get to the ADA compliance there. And another bathroom would be added across the hall. The break room would get a little bit smaller. And the, um, there'd be a, a second bathroom over there. And then that big area where the council chambers would be or was going to be. That's broke out into those little storage room for the police department and then their evidence and their pass-through. And it leaves the hallway to get back to this back corner storage. It's, it's, uh, room 011 is marked off as storage. That is actually where the sprinkler system comes into the building and the water meter. And that is, it's more of a mechanical area than. You sure can, they're yours to keep. So that, that back storage, that's why that hallway is really the hallway to get to a couple of these doors and then back to this back storage. There needs to be so much room of egress to get in and out of that mechanical room back there. Does anybody have any questions about that floor?
Is the mechanical room existing?
The mechanical room is staying existing. What you see on that side of the plan, sorry, Scott, I didn't cover that. The stairs aren't existing and the mechanical room would all be existing where the air handlers are, the boilers, boilers are. And then that X kind of, that's in between the mechanical room and the break room. That X is actually the elevator shaft. For those that don't know. And then the other X that would be on the backside of the boilers, that is actually the vault. There is no basement under the vault. So that's solid. That won't be anything because of the vault is right above that upstairs. So the main level floor, working our way up. The main level floor, I'll let everybody kind of take a look. There's not a whole lot that changed. I think Alderman Schmidt, at one time, we moved some stuff around to give her to that mailroom. You can see where that's kind of changed around. There's a lot of that has changed or has stayed the same. The chief's office has moved, the squad room is kind of towards the back. And now, if you can see outside where we had that big addition going on. The awning would more or less just get gutted out. The four pillars would stay there, but those islands would come out. And for now, that would just stay an island. We would not enclose that at this time. It would be just a roof and an access door at this time. There would be no garage doors or anything. It would just be a roof and more or less exactly what's existing, minus the islands and the drive-through stuff that obviously we don't need for a bank. That, that window would, would be gone. The pass-through would be gone, that would be all bricked up.
So it's not going to be enclosed garage?
At this time, we have not, we are not planning to enclose it.
Okay.
All right? And then the upstairs would stay the upstairs. There's no remodeling to do upstairs. That would stay just as is. We would leave the, the rooms, the offices on both sides of the, just the way they are. Storage would stay just the way it is. Obviously, the elevator still goes up and down and, up and down. Would go up there, but there would be nothing up there at this time. And our price to do this work, to get that done. And this is just an estimated cost again, $700,000 to perform that work.
What you have right here.
What you have before you, on paper. That's, um. So what's going in those offices? Upstairs on the second floor, you got all these offices, what's going in? Nothing at this time. There would not be anything in it at this time. So you just leave the floor vacant? Stay just the way it is currently today.
So it was cheaper to move the council chambers and everything in the basement than it was to put it up on the second floor?
It is.
Really?
Yeah.
How much do we have to sell side for this?
I'm gonna let Jamie talk to, uh, we kind of ran through the numbers and what we discussed originally. And I'm sorry, Dawn, I don't think, because you were not in the council yet when we originally started this conversation. But Jamie, if you want to go through.
Sure. So when we bought the building, we bought it for $200,000. We, at that time, we're hoping that we would be all in on the project for about 800. Which would mean that this estimate would need to be 600,000. We're $100,000 over it. We're not, um, I don't feel like in a terrible spot being $100,000 over it. I did run all of the numbers on our capital projects fund today. And we, as part of the 2025 budget, put $500,000 from general fund, fund balance into the capital projects fund. So there's plenty of money to cover it without any additional borrowing, anything like that. If we are taking what is currently in there, including the transfers that have been made for 2025. Taking out the $700,000 for this project and the amount that we discussed at the last meeting for some overage in the fire station project. We would still have a fund balance in the capital projects fund of approximately 485,000.
Does that include the extra that these other towns, Don Town like, they're kicking in?
That is not kidding. Yes.
Yeah, I don't know. That would be, if we're just paying for the fire station as we discussed at the last meeting. Where the city then is only kicking in 100-ish, 50 to 100 on that. So.
So this is just preliminary budget numbers for David?
Just a budget number.
I guess, what are we looking for action, whether or not we want to move forward to get actual bids?
That's. This, this 700,000, unlike, we found out the hard way with the fire department with the MEPs. That 700,000 does include those MEPs, that mechanical, electrical, plumbing, and fire. That would be in that 700,000. That wouldn't be coming back again for another 50 to 60,000.
Design work and everything is all included?
That is correct. In that estimated 700,000.
Did they come back with anything, a guesstimate at what it's going to cost to, to do the library, to stay here?
Thank you. I'm gonna get to that.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yep, nope, that's okay. I, we want to take them one at a time, but, so I, I did this afternoon. This morning, we found out that, um, working with Bayland and their engineers. That we do not have to put a sprinkler system or update the floor joists in the library as long as it's going to stay a library. And stay where it is. If we would change its use, then we would have to do that. We are not planning on changing the use. We're planning on keeping it a library. So it would not have to be sprinkled and we would not have to put floor joists in. So to move everything over there, give them a heating system, water, sanitary sewer upgrade on the building. That's here again, an estimated price from Bayland, $335,000 to do that work. and thirty-five thousand dollars to do that work.
When we have five hundred?
That is correct.
Over three years?
Over the course of three years, that is correct.
Do we have any, um, donations for any of this stuff?
The, we have a, a donor that will donate, if the library stays here, five hundred thousand dollars, that he will donate to the library.
Okay.
But that does not solve any of our, what do we do then with this part of the building? And what happens with the library that's already, you know, I mean, you're talking, we have the fire station, we have a lot of the chambers here and we also have Knutson Hall and they're all very old buildings, so we're, are we, is this a plan then to keep the library here no matter what? Is that already kind of on the docket is, or, um, if we even upgrade the, the associated bank, is there, is there a way to, um, if we're doing upgrades on that, to eventually move the library over with that extra space and try to raise that money? Because we were nine hundred thousand dollars short for moving the library over to give them the renovated, you know, to give them the extra space that they, they would like to have. So I'm, I'm trying to wrap my head around, are we keeping all three of the buildings and then still paying all the utilities?
What we're discussing, yeah.
In, in this proposal that I'm giving you right now, the library would stay where it currently is today and the police department and the admin city hall would move over to the bank facility.
What if we sold this building?
We would move to put it for sale. But this, this portion of.
Is it connected to the, the library?
They would get disconnected, the library would stay the library and everything this way would be, that's something that would have to be discussed of how that happens.
With the estimate for the library, that's leaving it as is minus the addition of, of the utilities that you need to, right? Like, so everything, the physical, the physical building would say, the footprint would stay, the size of the library would remain, that would not include any additional space?
That is correct.
And what was that number again?
Three hundred and twenty-five thousand.
Thirty-five.
I'm sorry, three hundred and thirty-five thousand.
That includes, uh, repair to the window?
That does not replace any windows at three hundred and thirty-five thousand, that is just straight up.
Just utility.
Moving the utilities over.
Providing the heat.
Providing heat, air conditioning, water, sanitary sewer, and then all electrical changes, um, that would happen on the inside.
Okay, the library costs three hundred and thirty-five thousand and we have five hundred thousand coming up with the library there, so we have a little extra that we've been donating, can we replace windows with that?
That, that would be, we would work to use the balance of that to do additional work up to that five hundred thousand at the library.
Is there any stipulation from the donor as far as how that money gets used in life?
I talked to him this afternoon, he will donate five hundred thousand dollars to keeping the library where it is, as long as it's to the library over the course of three years.
So there's nothing else that he wants or that?
He, he wants a horseshoe sidewalk in the front of the library.
And that entrance to be utilized?
And that entrance to, to be a vocal point to the public library.
But that's it?
That is it.
Can I ask Kathy a question? How, yeah, how does, how does this, this fit? Let's say, let's say this happens, right? Let's say we do, we do straight up, we just do the three hundred thousand or whatever, maybe add windows at the horseshoe. How does that, how does that situate us for the future, five years, ten years, twenty years? Um, are we, you know, does it satisfy us in a long enough term consideration for, for the needs of, of the city? Because I know space was a consideration already.
I think keeping us here does not help you do that. Um, if we had, you know, our collection size, you know, that library's program, the space that we ever had a chance to expand in the future, um, keep that in mind, maybe when we're thinking about selling property or, you know, is there room for us to grow a little bit? And I think upstairs with the bank, there might not have been an opportunity, you know, place to grow in for the future, but here in this, we're in this spot.
So I, I think that, like, that's, it's an issue, it's worth having that conversation, especially if we have, actually, I don't want to say extra money, you know, if we have, if we have, uh, available funds, how do you position it? Not only to, to make it stand alone, but also if not to do it immediately, how do you have it poised to be able to expand, to have that footprint? No, let's say even if we, we get rid of this building, we retain a certain amount of, of land with the consideration that, you know, future expansions, I think is, is an important.
I agree.
Jamie? So this three hundred some thousand, how are, it's, that five hundred's coming over three years, so how are we financing the three hundred and some thousand?
Uh, we would just take it out of that capital projects fund to pay for upfront and then as we get that donation money in, just refunction it.
So then that drops that capital out the amount that you talked about before.
Are we gonna be hurting over three years? What do we need to do at this point?
Well, the next steps would be if we decide to move this direction, okay? The other direction that we looked at was moving everything over, the big huge expansion onto the bank building, that was one point seven million. We looked at that number and I think everybody said, let's look a different direction, okay? Now, this is the second direction, um, we went this way. If this, this council feels like this is the way to go, the next thing to do would be to look to go out to bid and get an actual hard number.
I like, I like it all, Matt, but I don't like the council chambers in the basement. There's nothing on that second floor, there's a big open space in the middle, why can't we just be up there?
I think that's something we could look at down the road, change it.
Is, is there a fee now from Bayland, like there was really one with the fire station to move forward with this, what was it, thirty thousand dollars or whatever?
So if, if we would go out to bid and they would put together MEPs, mechanical, electrical, plumbing, fire protection, physical plans, at that time then, we would have a fee of probably somewhere around that hundred to a hundred and twenty thousand dollars for both sets.
But that's included in the estimate?
That, that is included in that seven hundred and that three twenty-five, yes.
Okay, thank you.
But if, if, if we would go out to bid, Wayne, I think, I think that answered your question, if we would go out to bid and we decide, okay, now we're gonna, we don't like this, we would still pay for those MEPs.
Yeah.
Does that make sense?
Yeah. I, I still like John's idea about the council chambers up there.
I, I really like them up there, that's brighter, it's better, and we could use the space downstairs where you got the council chambers as an exercise room for the police department or something like that.
I would actually mind if you all took the time to take this home and look at it.
I think it's fair for, for Kevin and Amy to be able to.
Yeah, because to your point, Wayne, last time you were very worried about a mayor's office, there is not. There's plenty of office space, I'm not saying there is none, but I don't, let's not get down that road again and then hey. Correct, so it wouldn't, might be who you all did.
Why isn't there a mayor's office?
Well.
It's kind of empty, you moved up on the second floor.
Yeah, there's plenty of offices, but I'm just saying, I'd rather if you didn't notice that after the bid.
So I guess what I'm hearing is details maybe not quite to the finalization point or direction wise, I mean, is that kind of what we're looking for?
Yeah, yeah.
Does the staff have any recommendations?
Tell me, tell me what, whatever everybody wants, that's my recommendation.
How much more do you think this is going to cost the city as far as keeping the library over there? I mean, I know they have, you know, we know what their budget is and, and they get a certain amount for the utilities and whatever, but we're still talking about the upkeep of a very old building over there and we're moving this and, and we still have this portion to deal with and we also have the old fire department to try to sell or do whatever and we still have major issues with Knutson Hall, so, I mean, we're gaining something good, but we're also hanging on to something that, you know, so, I don't know, I'm just, I'm looking at it from a ten thousand feet going, what's this all gonna look like down the road, you know, because at one point, if we had decided to enclose the garage before we do that, if we ever decided we wanted to move the library over there to give them the space that they have now, plus whatever the extra hundred square feet or whatever, you know, then we would need to somehow do something in the garage so that it's, um, it can handle that if we were to ever add on to the associated bank and move everything over there. So I don't, I just, there's a lot of questions still going through my mind on this, so I'm just throwing out things that I'm thinking of here.
Yeah, go ahead, Jim.
Uh, I was just gonna say, I think with the building upkeep over here, it's gonna have brand new electrical, plumbing, heating, cooling, all of that. It would take a really long time to have that add up to the million dollars that it would cost to move it over to the.
It costs you, if you move it over there, you forfeit the five hundred thousand, right?
Correct.
Yes.
I, well, plus if we move it, we don't get the five hundred thousand.
That's what I just said.
I think it'd be a fair assessment, Matt, you correct me if I'm wrong though, if we decide the library stays in there, it's never going on this building, but that'd be a pretty fair assessment.
If, if we're gonna put the money into this building.
Correct.
Right now, it's not in our time.
That's what I'm thinking.
I mean, we're not gonna put a thing, you know? Three hundred thousand dollars in that, in that building in ten years, look to move it. If, if we're gonna stick three hundred thousand dollars, whether it's donated money or it's city money, I, I think it's gonna be here for another twenty-plus years.
There's a plan next to it to add on, a nice addition if we needed to in the future sometime, but that's down the road. I mean, for right now, it's, it meets the needs, yeah.
And down the road, you might have sold this building and the fire station and have more money in general fund.
So would you just basically wall up the doors and wall up that and then sell this portion or decide what we would do with it?
That would be a, a conversation, I think that we would, if, if we decide we're gonna go that route and we get to that point and we decide to go to the, move to the bank, then we would have that conversation of how we are going to make that, this transition to this building and what it becomes.
And just so you know, the, uh, school district is very interested in this proper.
Who is?
The school, the people that break next door.
Well, I know, we had that conversation once and we went back to the school and he never gave us an answer, so I don't know how interested.
They're very physically interested, they're not so financially interested.
I think maybe the mayor took a better stab at it.
I, I, I just think if, you gotta have a mayor's office, I don't care who the mayor is, the mayor's gotta have an office in this building.
My point was that maybe.
You're blue, I'm.
For a while, that's all.
It's, I didn't notice that, but I see we have a building inspector's office in here and what is the data thing behind the building inspector? What is that?
Data closet for.
Server room.
Server room for all the internet IT stuff.
Can, can we move some of, like, the chief's office and stuff back and put the mayor's office in there?
Should we not design it tonight, but just have a direction?
But I'm not gonna give them the okay to go ahead until I know what we're getting and I'm sure Kevin and Amy are gonna be the same way.
Well, that's why I said we should.
That's a fair point, as the mayor's making.
I mean, that. Well, I'm throwing it out now so that when we come back, that's fine. Um, we just got this tonight and I'm sure Kevin's gonna have some questions on it.
Yeah.
But I think it's pretty evident, we're not moving the library over there.
I would be in favor for at least moving forward with getting actual bid numbers for that portion for the library.
I would like them both to go to bid at the same time because you're gonna get a lot better bids if you're bidding them both than bidding them individually. Uh, unless we're gonna do one and not the other.
Second, I don't know.
No, I, I think both, I, I personally support both moving forward, but maybe changing that building inspector extra office to a mayor's office and then the extra office can be upstairs.
The reason that, uh, so the last time we brought these plans for you, there was the mayor's office was shared with the building inspector, so we moved the mayor's office to the upstairs and that was the recommendation from this body the last time.
Okay.
To, to go upstairs with it? Sorry.
The building inspector's here what?
Ten hours.
One hour?
He's here an hour of, a week.
Let's move him upstairs and keep him mayor.
I was just gonna say.
Wow.
But again, we're not redesigning it, I'm told right now, so.
Yeah.
I'm just letting you know my thoughts. I mean, I'm providing an office for a guy that's here an hour a week.
Yeah.
But I'm not giving the mayor an office.
I, the, the mayor's office has been moved upstairs from the last month when we discussed.
We've been upstairs.
We, we, we used to have the administrator's office upstairs here too.
Mm-hmm.
I think just we make the building inspector.
And we can discuss that.
Share with the mayor.
We, we can. We can make the admin, the building inspector's office, the mayor's office.
It seems to be sufficient amount of space in this building to accommodate multiple offices for comfortable, both of those positions. And I, I think that if, if in fact we want to discuss the particulars of it, that's something that doesn't have to be chewed on today. I know Scott's, you seem anxious to want to get going on it and I, I appreciate that. Um, and, because I think it's, it's important to move forward, but I think it, it also behooves us to, you, you take a moment, you let everybody kind of take it in, you let old elders that aren't here have that opportunity, um, there's a couple tweaks and then, you know, make sure that we have all the ducks in the row, all the ducks in the row and then can hit the ground running.
All right, so having said that, do you want to wait till next meeting or do you want to have an interim meeting to discuss those exact issues and get it finalized to get going?
Might add some personnel maybe?
Yeah.
So can we, can we have your issues today? What you have, we've seen now that we want to change the mayor's office from upstairs back down to downstairs and is there anything else?
The chamber, or the council chambers upstairs?
To the medium, to the main floor?
No, to the second floor.
Can we do a contingency bid like that, like, leave it the way it is and what if you move it upstairs? Is that a possibility, Matt?
If, if we're gonna talk about, if we're going to put the council chambers down in the basement, it's really where you're gonna put those nine seats and that table. It, there, there is no structural changes to any walls being built or not being built. If we would move it upstairs, there would be nothing that would change up there, it would be in the center of those offices upstairs.
Are those offices, are they, um, brick and mortar or are they like?
No.
Just?
They could be moved, they can be.
The offices upstairs are brick and mortar. If, if you were gonna move offices up there, you'd physically be taking down studs and drywall and.
Yeah, but it could be done.
But yeah, yes, I mean, they're not, they're not partitions to slide out of the way, they're actual.
They're not, they're not bearing walls, none of them are bearing walls.
No, that is correct.
But there's enough space up there to put that table and those nine chairs with an audience.
So to John's point then, that decision, even if this goes out to bid?
Doesn't change anything.
Doesn't change anything, it'll be, the day we move in, we put that table where, on whatever level we decide.
They would walk that furniture inside and they would either walk it down the steps or down the elevator or up the elevator.
Well, I'm sure it's gonna involve some cabinetry, just like.
Yeah.
We built this.
But if we didn't put it downstairs, Matt, you would still build those walls in the break room smaller and wouldn't you want to leave the break room that bigger?
No.
Is the square footage of the, the basement and the upper level the same?
No, the basement is smaller because you don't have the vault upstairs, you have building over the vault, you don't downstairs in the basement.
Aaron, and I, I know that you'd like the, all the, the details, but perhaps, perhaps it'd be best to, to everybody, you know, and stick, because, you know, there's a lot of things, like, everybody take a look at it and then, like, within, within this, like, a few days here, get to you.
Sure.
Collectively and then we'll, we'll carry the conversation about everything about this building at a, a different future time.
Yep, yeah, that would be a good idea, you can get it to me, I can gather it and I can give it all to Matt, who can vet it, contact you with any solutions or anything that he might have, if that works.
The only thing that I don't necessarily like is not closing in the, underneath the roof. I mean, getting the vehicles out of the weather was something that we talked about, prolonging vehicles, just like, you know, fire equipment. I don't know how much more that was, Matt, but that is the only thing that I don't.
Hundred thousand dollars more. It, it's significantly more because, it was a two, yeah, two hundred thousand dollars more because to get the heating system out there is a big expense.
Why does it have to be heated?
Yeah.
Matt, if we. Bring the engines in, they're warm, everything melts and then it's not heated?
We're still gonna do the concrete work, get rid of the pilings, get rid of the.
Yeah, that's always.
Islands, correct?
That is correct.
If, am I correct that, say later we want to build walls, we don't have to take that up for bid down the road because it'd be a smaller project?
We wouldn't, well.
I guess to Scott's point, it wouldn't be like we had to go back out to Bayland to get this done.
One hundred and five thousand dollars, we'd have to go back out to bed.
But I think we could put up three walls for twenty-five grand.
So there are no drains there?
No.
So you start heating it, you're gonna have to have drains.
We can't heat it for twenty-five grand, but we could put walls up.
Your, your point is that if we're gonna enclose it, we gotta heat it. Your, your point is that if we're gonna enclose it, we gotta heat it.
Why do we have to heat it? Our microwave's not here.
And if you're gonna heat it, you're gonna have thawing, you're gonna have water.
Correct.
So you gotta have drainage.
Mm-hmm.
So it's not as simple as just putting some walls up.
No. I mean, if, if we want it drawn back in, I can drop back in, but
I didn't know how much it was.
It's expensive.
You know, I mean, this is, again, like, if we're, we're looking at the library, it's gonna be at twenty-thirty, a long time. Uh, and, I mean, if, there's financial considerations here, obviously. I'm not saying necessarily to have it drawn back in, but I, I think that, that it's kind of, it's an important thing, and part of, part of the selling point of having a new public safety building when we were talking about a combine was to
To have a garage space.
Right, which, you know, preservation of those vehicles, granted, those, they go through them more quickly than regular vehicles, so might not, you know, but there's, there's other advantages to it. And I, I say this without even having a, like, whether or not we should or not, it just, it's, it's worth, worth thinking about.
Does this get to the finance committee next?
Well, we don't finalize it here.
Why don't we schedule a finance committee meeting?
We have one for the nineteen, definitely, something like that.
Yep.
Yeah.
So Could we give us some time to look at that over to the
That's exactly what I was saying.
I'd, I'd
Let us, let him, everybody chew on it? Get Amy and Kevin
No.
Yeah. Do, do we want to officially move it into two separate and make a decision? Is the library staying here? Is that something where that's a for sure?
I, well, you, you'd be foolish not to for five hundred thousand dollars.
Yeah.
I mean, if somebody's gonna donate five hundred thousand dollars to keep the library here, then that's a no-brainer. Then we should just be making that decision tonight on that.
I totally agree.
Because that gentleman, from what I understand, if that library moves, that five hundred thousand is out the door.
You are correct.
Correct?
You are correct.
So that's a no-brainer.
I agree, a hundred percent.
So what do you want? Do you want a motion?
So could we still, could we still have the understanding, though, that we'd like to go out to bid with everything together as the administrator requested?
We could leave that
We don't need that in the motion, but can we understand that as part of this motion, even though you're deciding to separate them, we're still keeping it together when we go out to bid?
I think the motion should read that we're gonna retain the library in its current location and let everything bid together. And then you can get, uh, once we meet on finance and personnel, and we all give our input, Amy and Kevin, and then finalize it there and go to bid. It's only a couple weeks away.
Yeah.
I, I, they're not gonna be starting tomorrow. We waited three months.
Yeah.
Is that your motion?
Yeah.
So, um, your motion is to retain the library in its current location, but keep, um, the bid project together as a whole?
Yes.
Okay, so I have a motion by, um, Wayne Schmidt, and a second by Dawn Kidd, to retain the library in its current location and keep, but keep the bid project together. Um, Dawn Kidd?
Yes.
Mitch Swedberg?
Yes.
John Ortley?
Yes.
Casey Boer?
Yes.
Wayne Schmidt?
Yes.
Scott Meverden?
Yes.
Thank you. All right, new business, uh, the place to cover the job description for the sergeant investigator position.
Did that get included, what Amy brought up at the last meeting? Cause I didn't, mine didn't open up for the, to the job description.
Yeah, I was gonna
But I
That's my fault, then. But yes, it did get
Cause that was her, she brought that up as well.
Adding the verbiage, or, yeah.
Yeah, the verbiage for the training did get added, but that's my fault that it's not in the packet. I can send it to everyone after this meeting.
That's the only change.
That's the only change that was made.
You have a change.
I, I'll make a motion to approve the job description as presented.
Your second?
John's second.
Rule call, please.
Yeah, my second. Motion by Scott, second by John?
Yes.
Uh, Ortley?
Yes.
Swedberg?
Yes.
Boer?
Yes.
Kidd?
Yes.
Wayne Schmidt?
Yes.
Meverden?
Yes.
Thank you. Resolution twelve thirty-one, twenty twenty-five, the rescue capital purchase of the Lucas devices. Uh, motion would be to adopt the resolution. Any comments or make a motion? By Mitch?
Second.
By Scott? No discussion, rule call, vote, please.
Meverden?
Yes.
Swedberg?
Yes.
Schmidt?
Yes.
Boer?
Yes.
Ortley?
Yes.
Kidd?
Yes.
Thank you. Resolution twelve thirty-two, twenty twenty-five, the joining and application for vacation of a portion of the plot of Kirk's first addition to the city of Algoma.
I have a question. What does it mean to vacate a portion of, is that to put in, like, a road for access to it, or what?
Is currently plotted as a road. We would be vacating it to the owner to be able to plot that into a residential lot. Okay, so if you were up there now in this subdivision, um, or in this area, that road, you would go west right into the water tower. The road will never go there. When it was plotted as a road, the water tower wasn't there. Now you drive right into the water tower. It, it really would be an alley to nowhere, is what it would be, wouldn't be a through alley. So vacating that would give the property owner a chance to put, instead of the three lots that he has over there, it'd give him an additional fourth lot to build.
The city gives up any interest in the property?
More or less, we're vacating the interest that we have to ever put a road in there.
And this is we decide tonight so that you two can sign it?
Yeah, we've had this discussion.
This went through the plan commission. This is a recommendation to the full council, um, to move forward. That's okay?
Steve, paying us anything for this project?
It's not ours to sell. It's never been ours, we don't own it. Um, so when you have a plotted piece of property, they went and got a state plot on it, the city has never owned it. We have the right to build a road in there, but it's never been ours. We have no ownership in it to sell it.
Okay, thank you.
The way I read it, there's two property owners involved that, that gain, Autumn's Journey?
That is correct. The Autumn's Journey would gain half of it by state statute. Half goes to one owner, half goes to the other owner. Autumn's Journey is forgiving their half.
Oh, they are?
They are. And, and he's getting a hundred percent of it.
Okay.
A lot of times they'll go in it together, have the CSM done together, they split the price, they both get the thirty-three feet, or whatever the, the frontage is. The, Autumn's Journey is forgiving his half.
Cause it does mention both of them in the
That is correct.
Okay. It's nice to see all that, uh, that house building action up on the, in the third district.
Yeah.
I'll make a motion to approve resolution twelve thirty-two dash twenty twenty-five.
Second.
Motion by Scott, second by Mitch. Rule call, please.
Ortley?
Yes.
Boer?
Yes.
Swedberg?
Yes.
Meverden?
Yes.
Schmidt?
Yes.
Kidd?
Yes.
Thank you. And resolution twelve thirty-three, twenty twenty-five, contract with Bayland Builders for the construction of a new fire and rescue station?
So this is the AIA final document, now it's been taken out of draft. Um, everybody has it, I think, as part of their packets. A question after our last meeting, um, three weeks ago, two weeks ago, was the breakdown. Um, I handed that out to everybody here tonight, the breakdown. If you can see, or if you see, um, where we had that fifty-four, fifty-seven thousand dollar shortfall, now at the bottom, it's a hundred and four. That, um, MEP document that I came and asked for fifty to sixty thousand dollars has now been added into the AIA document as a bid. Okay, so that wasn't in there the last time we talked, but now that is in. So that's not a separate bill that we will be getting, it is built in to this AIA final document. With that, I will leave it up for anybody's questions.
Can I just, um, kind of go through how I have the resolution written? Um, so the resolution is to approve this AIA contract with Bayland. Um, and then it breaks down, because initially when we talked about the price last couple weeks ago, it was like three point nine, I don't know, two, three, or something like that. Um, the total in the AIA document is now three point nine eight six eight three seven, um, which includes that fifty-four thousand dollars, the base construction bid, and the alternate number three for those cord rails. And then we also, um, explain in the resolution where the money's coming from. So proceeds, uh, from the twenty twenty-four debt issuance, that's all geo-debt. Uh, all of the interest earned on that geo-deb borrowing, a two hundred thousand dollar donation from Terry Bullwiler, and then the rest is going to be made up of capital projects funded reserves. If we would get any contribution from a township, perhaps, um, that would just go back into capital projects fund to fund future projects or offset this.
What is the township's, um, feelings right now? This letter sounds pretty negative.
We'll be scheduling and setting up another meeting with them.
So any other contributions from anybody would just go and take it over?
Which is kind of offset where we're taking the money from.
If, if we would end up getting any contributions from the towns, it would be over the course of five to ten years. Um, so it wouldn't be a one-time check. So, I mean, we'd see that money come in as probably part of our contract every spring.
Correct.
Now, that, that contingency amount can change, all right? This is, that eighty-six thousand, that's a contingency they put in there for unexpected things. That can go down, right?
It, it could go to zero. It, it might not have to spend a dollar of it. But if you don't build that in and something happens
But that's the max.
We'd have to come back to the council to say, can we spend X amount of dollars more?
And, and wasn't that soil already tested?
Uh, the soil on one end was tested, but not on this end. The original site on the far south, that was tested.
Okay. And for winter conditions, that ten thousand, that's if they don't get the project done, and they gotta work in the winter, or what?
Their plan is, right now, they will be working in the winter to break ground, probably late September, if not earlier.
I'll make a motion to approve resolution twelve thirty-three dash twenty twenty-five.
Second.
Motion by Scott and second by Casey, I mean?
Yep.
Rule call?
Ortley?
Yes.
Boer?
Yes.
Schmidt?
Yes.
Meverden?
Yes.
Kidd?
Yes.
Swedberg?
Yes.
Administrator's report, Ken?
Couple things to touch base on. Um, one, I would just like to say thank you to Jandu Petroleum, uh, the owner of the Citco and the VP. A couple weeks back, we had a credit card issue, um, where things weren't jiving the way they were supposed to be. Um, no, no harm, no foul. It's all been addressed, but they did open up, on Saturday, early morning, opened up charge accounts for fire or rescue uh, police department. They've just ran charge cards, or just ran charges for us. Uh, when we came in Monday, Tuesday, that was all straightened out and addressed, and they were made whole. Uh, but thank you for them, just with one phone call, and they're like, yep, not a problem, we'll take care of that, so. Just wanted to give them a special thanks. Uh, second thanks is, we just talked about the MEPs for the fire station. Um, that work was between fifty and sixty thousand dollars that they had estimated that price. First Supply from Green Bay, um, they donated all the mechanical engineering for that and did all that design. So I'd like to say thank you to First Supply in Green Bay. Um, that is, is, you don't see it on there, but there is actually a deduct, um, from their original price that we did not get charged for any of the mechanical, um, heating and cooling work that was done, that was all donated by First Supply. So special thanks, shout out to them, so. Um, tax increment project, I'm gonna start down on, uh, the apartment condo, or the apartments down here. Um, they are moving along, it's getting close now. Um, Kiwanee County Economic Development Committee has a meeting here scheduled for August fourteenth at nine AM. They are gonna meet here in the council chambers, and then they have a, uh, tour scheduled, or to go through the, uh, apartments down there. If anybody, the mayor of the common council would like to go, um, we would set that up at that time as well. It would probably be, if you're not, don't wanna be at the economic meeting, about ten AM, we would head over there for a tour.
What day?
On the fourteenth.
Thursday?
Thursday, the fourteenth. So if anybody is interested in coming, please let me know. If there will be, uh, the majority of you, I will, we will post that there will be a notice, or a quorum notice, so. Just so everybody knows about that. Um, they are probably September first, somewhere right in there, people will start moving in there. Um, I, last I talked, I think about fifty-five percent occupied that are rented out now, uh, that have one-year leases set up.
What's how, what percent?
Fifty-five percent.
Fifty-five percent.
Yeah, are rented out.
For loading people?
Uh, it's workforce development. So it is, um, you have to have a job, you have to make, I think the bottom of the rent starts, JB, you looked at it, just, I wanna say the
Six, six or seven?
Six forty-five, I think.
Six forty-five, and then goes all the way up to like twelve hundred a month. But there's one bedrooms all the way up to four-bedroom apartments as well.
What is the bottom level?
Uh, mostly parking, but for the end caps. The north and the south side have, that's where the three and four bedrooms, or most of the four bedrooms are, that are two-story apartments, but the whole center is all parking underneath the building.
And that's assigned according to the apartments?
That is correct. So, that is what I have. Does anybody else have any questions about that? It's been a lot, you can start to see things. I think the landscapers are starting to put shrubs and stuff in, and kind of the same thing on the inside, the finishing touches are going in there, so.
Do you have an update on their other projects?
I'm getting there now.
Well, let's move it along. There was nothing in writing here, so I'd never know what you're gonna talk about, guys.
I do that so you don't ask five questions.
Yeah.
Make you think on your feet, Wayne.
What, what time of the day was that, Matt?
Uh, nine AM, but we would probably be over there about ten.
Okay.
So.
Yeah.
Thanks for going for sure.
Yeah, like I said, just let me know, um, if you're interested in coming. On the other end of the city, uh, tax increment district number five, uh, myself and Jamie had a meeting set up with Jeff Belangi, we got through that. Jeff is scheduled to be here to present our, um,
Debt issuance.
Debt issuance, thank you, Jamie. Um, September sixteenth at the finance and personnel, um, Jeff Belangi will be here to discuss that.
What's he gonna discuss?
Our debt issuance for our bond borrowing, to go to the bond market, uh, for the financing for that tax increment district number five. So the ball is all rolling on that. Robert E. Lee is in the middle of getting the plans together and still working on that to get that out to bid for as far as putting in, uh, doing the work on Sunset Fremont, and then the two roads that have to be built. The developers agreement has been signed. We're guessing the last everybody caught together and had a conversation, sometime probably February, that day would start. Probably you'd see building going on there.
Have you put roads in before February?
We won't see roads probably going until probably April, April, May. Does anybody have any questions about that?
Sounds good.
Who's the fire station gonna start?
Uh, end of September.
This September?
This September. If nobody has any questions about that, I'm gonna turn it over. There's been a lot of questions about Olson Park. So I'm gonna let Casey touch base on where we're at with Olson Park.
Olson Park, we are still going to get started, that project this year, we're hoping it's started in like June. Um, most of the funding is there, and they're waiting on a little bit more, um, nothing on our end. Um, we did start, we are gonna start the sodaump site on the west end of town, probably next week, and hopefully have that done in the next couple weeks. Um, coming this year, yeah, we will at Olson Park. There's any erosion control put in yet, and we're going to remove sections of the gravel and make it black dirt and plant some grasses there. Um, so that'll have to be done anyway, and that'll cover our match of the project. One thing they're waiting on now is historical studies on the three buildings that are there, of any historical significance, before they will, uh, finalize one of the grants, so. Once that is done, they're anticipating the end of August, early September, then we'll get the erosion control up, and then we will start, uh, hammering out our end of that project. And, um, there probably won't be much done there this year yet, from a contractor's standpoint, and that'll start next year. And I think the anticipation is that'll be all completed in twenty-seven.
What buildings?
The Old House, Old Zebevo, and the old
Anything to throw some pieces in?
Good. That is all I have.
And the park will act, it'll be accessible throughout, at least this year, this year's portion of the project. Next year, I can't speak to that quite yet, cause at some point, I don't know exactly when the parking lot's going in and everything, but um, there will be some times where it won't be accessed or limited access. But for now, for the remainder of this year, there'll always be um there will be some times where it won't be access or limited access, but for now, for the remainder of this year, there'll always be access to.
Do you wanna touch on Moon Park?
I can.
Everybody wants to know why we're putting in that crooked landing strip.
Yeah, so you drive by Moon Park, there's a bunch of stakes in there. Uh we're working with uh the Venture Academy on putting in some underdrain, some uh trails through there, adding some trees of any type that we want, um which I believe we can cover any part of a grant through Olson Park. And we're gonna put a walking trail on there, gazebo, um so hopefully that started in the next week or two here. Uh the stakes, Robert Lee came and staked out uh um path and got us some elevations for the underdrain. That project, the main part of that is funded by the Venture Academy, so it's a big appreciation to them. We got a little bit of labor we gotta throw into it, but um for what it's gonna be at the end, I think it's about worth.
Does somebody from the city oversee it then?
Yeah.
Sure it's all.
We're we're actually doing a majority of the work.
You're doing it.
Our engineering firm has has done all the staking and engineering for it.
So we're doing the majority of the work, the Venture Academy's probably gonna help put up some trees. We got a set of engineered or approved by our engineer plans for gazebo that um we basically gave them all some materials and they're gonna put it together and put it up.
Well, you got the floor, Casey, is Berryfield still closed?
No, Berryfield is back open, um just did a wonderful job of bringing that to a stop and we haven't had any issues since.
Good.
Anything else? Thank you, you're good?
Good.
Okay, uh for the mayor's comments, I'd like to turn it over to the chief, he got a letter that I'd like him to.
Um actually, I have a couple of things, but um there was a letter that was sent by the sheriff's department that last week, um there was an incident that happened out in the county. Um they requested mutual aid from Officer Adset and who went out there and assisted the uh sheriff's department who was um very instrumental in, um I can't get into details of it, but just uh locating an individual and making a really good um case that it was the sheriff's department sent out accommodation for um for his work as well as the deputies that also were part of that case. Also, um I would like to note that last year, I don't even know when it was, but uh received notification from the um Wisconsin Victims Rights Court, um where and victim from an incident that happened here in the city, um filed a complaint against uh the police department as well as um the county. And um happened like four years ago where I wasn't even here, but um basically stating that the city did not do a good job in investigating this incident. And uh I read the report and submitted the um a response to their claims. And it was like a week and a half ago, two weeks ago, something like that, I received notification back that uh there was no probable cause um in that, that our officer did a a good job investigating it and this department wasn't liable for any um anything like that. And I just wanted to um that that officer was Officer Benke and she was you know, less than a year on the job and did a very good job documenting everything, so it would easy for me to write a response back to the state where they found that we were not liable for anything, that we did a that she did a really good job investigating it and documenting it, so.
Thank you. All right. Uh I have nothing else, agenda items for next meeting, Matt?
Oh. I just wanna give the fire chief just a second to touch base with a couple of activities he has coming up this weekend.
Okay, thank you. Well, I'm sorry, maybe you want some time too.
You want to help he's doing it.
Okay, I'm sorry.
Uh the Algoma Fire and Rescue Department will be hosting one of our biggest fundraisers of the year on Sunday morning. Uh we'll have our porky and pancake breakfast, I believe this is our thirty fifth year of hosting that. Uh so looking forward to that, it'll be Sunday, August tenth, we'll be serving breakfast from seven AM till noon. So if you're out and about, we would appreciate seeing you there to help support our fire and EMS group.
So you're good, you're good, Wayne?
Yeah, Scott's buying ones, I don't need to.
Okay. Agenda items for the next meeting for uh the staff here, here in Jamie, toward that. Uh next meeting would be Tuesday, September second. And number eighteen, the motion to go into closed session, I had a discussion with Matt and um I I feel like the towns have so much information that I don't want the city not to hand out the information, so I have to not go into closed session. Do you wanna add anything to that, Matt? This is pretty simple, so I can make it. Is everyone all right with that?
Yep.
All right. So then uh nineteen and twenty are mute points and uh votes to return.
So.
Second.
By me, second by Scott, all in favor?
All right.